Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All those we gather today is the Fannie County Commission. We ask your blessing upon us as we go about the business of the county. Grant us the wisdom and where for all to do the right things for the county. We also ask, Lord, we're getting pretty dry in this part of the world. Again, we really appreciate a lot of moisture and a little bit less heat if that's possible. We really appreciate that. Lord be with everyone in this room. Grant us joy and happiness, safety in our travels. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioners. I don't have any comments today other than to remind the public that there are a Fannie County position and at-large position available on the Compass Area Mental Health Board, and so applicants should contact Compass if they are willing or wanting to serve. Ready for the consent agenda, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll move the approval of our consent agenda as published.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carries. Now's our opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to address the Commission this morning? Seeing none, we'll move straight into our business agenda. Madam Clerk, is this where we cannot start before 8:30 or 8:40, or do we?
Eight forty, that's correct. So I would recommend that you move on to the 25th judicial items. They should go fairly quickly.
All right, we're gonna skip the districts and go straight to the 25th Judicial District Corrections, Budget Adjustment. Robert can fill in the blanks on what that's for, or are you gonna do it, Beth?
I can fill in the blanks.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Beth Beavers. I'm with the Fannie County Department of Corrections. The first item, you visited with an approved last Commission session. I overthought and made a mistake. So the original amount of forty thousand, six hundred and four dollars and fifty-nine cents is the correct amount. So this budget adjustment is actually unspent grant funds. So we're moving them over salary and benefits to the budget from the carryover fund so we can expend that grant money. So, in speaking with Robert and Dory, the adjustment from last Commission meeting will need to be rescinded, and then approval for this new one for forty thousand, six hundred and four dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Questions from the Commission as to the need or necessity of the requested action?
Can you get motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we amend the budget, move the forty thousand, six hundred and forty-nine to the appropriate call of order.
Yes.
So first of all, can we rescind the motion from the eight seven?
Okay, I'll rescind the motion from the eight seven.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to rescind the budget adjustment of the August 7th meeting in forty thousand, or forty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carries. Next motion, sir.
Your turn, Bishop.
Oh, and we substitute the amount of forty, let's see, the previous one was forty-two thousand, three sixty-six, ninety-eight, and that needs to be substituted with forty thousand, six oh four, fifty-nine.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Been moved and seconded to correct, the correct budget adjustment as requested. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Next up?
Next up is the FY twenty-four Adult Carryover Reimbursement Budget Summary. So the carryover reimbursement, I'll have the adult and I'll have the juvenile after this, is actually revenues collected in the prior fiscal year and any unspent carryover funds from the prior fiscal year as well. For the adult carryover, we had three hundred and thirty-two thousand, thirty-nine dollars and nine cents. So we had an excellent year as far as collection of revenues. We're getting closer to being at the level we were prior to COVID. And we kind of held off on spending last year's carryover just, just for a savings account on that. So the Kansas Department of Corrections grant covers all salaries and benefits except for two. Our carryover reimbursement budget covers our two outpatient substance abuse counselors, and then all of our operating expenses except for rent. There's nothing extraordinary for the carryover reimbursement except for line 21 in equipment category, which I'm asking for a new vehicle. The last time we purchased was in 2014. It was a Chevy Cruze. Does anyone have any questions on?
Who needs, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, would you please?
Who needs to sign? Is it the chairman or the entire board?
The chairman.
Chairman, okay, then I'll offer, if in order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please proceed.
That the recommendation be approved it by the motion to sign for the Commission Chairman to sign the fiscal year 24 Community Corrections Carryover Reimbursement Budget as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second with a follow-up question. Is there, without paging all three, is there a total dollar number that we're talking about here, Beth?
Yes.
Find it if I page too far enough, but.
Three hundred and thirty-two thousand, thirty-nine dollars and nine cents.
Ask me that be part of your motion, Commissioner?
I have no objection. And that funding comes from, actually, part of that's from the state, is it not?
It is not. The carryover reimbursement is revenues collected, so it is our outpatient substance abuse treatment evaluations, offender fees, and UAs, and electronic monitoring.
Thanks for the clarification.
All right, in my packet, Beth, help me understand, the total number on the pending motion is three thirty-two oh thirty-nine oh nine, correct?
Correct.
And the very next item on our agenda is another carryover reimbursement issue?
It is. This one is, it is separate.
Describe why or how it's separate.
This is for youth services. So there's the two divisions. We have adult community corrections, and then we have the 25th Judicial Youth Services.
Present motion is an adult community correction?
Correct.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? We'll call a question and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. One more item.
One more item. So this one is for the FY twenty-four Juvenile Carryover Reimbursement. Again, this is revenues collected and any carryover that is unspent. As far as for the youth services, we collect no revenues. As far as charging juveniles and their families for our services, those are all included in the grant. So this seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents is just carryover funds from many previous years back when we used to charge prior to me. The only thing that we really need to spend out of this is down on line 3A Contract and Client Services, the ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Those is, that is for electronic monitoring of pre-adjudicated youth. So we initially spend the money to pay for the services, and then the families reimburse us.
Any other questions on this issue with regard to youth services carryover reimbursement?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Year budget.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve the Youth Services Advisory, Youth Services Budget, seventy-nine thousand, eight fifty-seven, twenty-five. Any further discussion?
And authorize the chair to sign.
And authorize the chair to sign. Is that part of your motion, Mr. Jones? And, and the second? Very well. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I think, I think that's Senator Job description.
This is mine. It's stuck in your chest up there.
That was my pen tie, my Ed Brown pen tie. Summertime. All right, aye.
Good morning.
We're going to have a public hearing on Sewer District Budget Number One. Please announce your presence and tell us what you got.
Jenny Newberry, Assistant County Administrator and Finance Director, and I have for you Eastside Sewer District Number One. This sewer district has 286 hookups, including the campgrounds, one pump station, and the city treats the sewage from this district. The customers are billed monthly by Public Works based on the sewage costs. Late accounts are added to the tax bill with board approval, and this district has a 6.9 delinquency in ad valorem taxes. So we are here today to hopefully approve this 2024 budget as presented with the total expenditures of three hundred and thirty, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, mill levy rate of 2.599. Or you could make changes to this. Are there any questions on this one?
Questions from the Commission. My question is to Dory, notices public properly given, we're ready to move on this budget?
Correct.
All right, Commissioners, any questions?
It's my understanding, Mr. Chairman, we need to open for public hearing and then get into the process of approving the budget. Is that correct?
I believe so.
I would move that we open a public hearing for Sewer District Number One.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to conduct a public hearing on Sewer District Number One's budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? We're in a public hearing on Sewer District Number One Budget. Anyone else other than Jenny wish to address the Commission with regard to comments on Sewer District Number One Budget as published?
What was the delinquency rate you said?
This one is 6.9.
Mr. Chairman, mine's a follow-up question with regard to that. With, whether it's this sewer district or any of the others, after the, they are delinquent, the homeowner is delinquent for so long, what, what's the process? What happens?
They're, they're different.
Means put on properties, or what?
For this sewer district, it comes before you all to approve after six months or so, I believe, to put it on to the tax bill as a delinquent.
Okay. Like that was important to get that.
Any other comments from the Commission or questions? We are in public hearing.
I'll offer the motion to close the public hearing when you're ready.
I don't think there's anybody else that wants to address the Commission on this issue. It's, we have a motion to go out of public hearing and reconvene in.
Regular session, yeah.
Second. Moved and seconded that we go back into regular session out of this public hearing of this budget, Sewer District One Budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Now we're back in regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion.
Please.
Offer a motion that the Eastside Sewer District Number One 2024 Budget be adopted as presented for a total expenditure of three hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, and a mill levy set at the rate of 2.599.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to approve the Fannie County Eastside Sewer District 2024 Budget as presented. Expenditures of three hundred and thirty thousand, eight ninety-five, mill levy rate of 2.599. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jenny. Next hearing date may commence.
This is for Sewer District Number Two. This sewer district is at Southwind, has 161 hookups, is a lagoon system with seven pump stations. All fees are levied in this district, and it has a delinquency rate of 1.3%. Presented in front of you today with expenditures of sixty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty, and a mill levy rate of 3.565.
Need a motion to go into public hearing on this budget item?
Second?
Moved and seconded to convene a public hearing on Sewer District Number Two Budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Now conducting a public hearing on Sewer District Number Two and the budget as presented. Anyone other than Jenny wish to address the Commission? See anyone? Any other discussion on Sewer District Number Two's 2024 Budget? Commissioner Jones, move back into regular session?
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded back into regular session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Now in the regular session of the Fannie County Commission. Motion, you go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the Fannie County Sewer District Number Two, 2024, I believe would be, it's not printed that way here, budget for sixty-six thousand, four fifty, at a mill levy of 3.565.
I'll second. Moved and seconded to approve the Fannie County Sewer District Number Two, 2024 Budget as presented with total expenditures of sixty-six, four fifty, and a mill levy of 3.565. Any further discussions from the Commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. We have to tell jokes or do something until? Eight fifty, so we will wait the three and a half minutes. Jenny, do you know any new jokes, or no?
Do not.
All right. The one thing that will take up a little bit of time while we're doing this is are there any other public service or other public announcements as to things going on in our community while we wait the other few minutes here before the budget hearing? Commissioner Fishney?
Nothing comes to mind immediately.
Well, I have one.
Other than our calendar that'll come up later in the.
Correct, but our Brunkbusters play Butler County Thursday evening at seven o'clock, I believe, unless that time gets changed, and encourage the public to come out and see the 2024 version of the Garden City Brunkbusters. They're playing Butler County Community College, always a powerhouse in the Jayhawk Conference. I wish coaches and players in the college well in that endeavor, as we need to rise back to the top of that conference and lead the nation in football. We can do it.
That didn't take enough time there, Mr. Chairman. You're gonna have to raw raw some more.
Well, I can't tell you exactly the high school Buffalo football schedule, but it's exciting that we're back to school and.
I think the eighth of September is, might be their first home game, if I'm not mistaken.
Silence for 30 seconds at a time is sometimes rough. My clock says it's exactly eight fifty.
But silence is golden, too.
Depends on how many grandchildren you let to go back to their parents. It's one disappointing, but it's all right when they leave.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, we, I don't know what I move, that we go into, into, to a public hearing for Sewer District Number Three.
Very good. And is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to have public hearing on Sewer District Number Three's 2024 Budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. We're having and conducting a public hearing on Sewer District Number Three. Any public comment other than Ms. Newberry's address to the Commission? Hearing none, Jenny, would you proceed, please?
Sure. This sewer district has 282 connects, 309 total available hookups. The clerk's office bills this one out and at a rate, and if they are paid by September 30th, they get a discount. If they are not paid by September 30th, they go to tax levy. This system has two pumps and city treatment of the sewage. It also has a delinquency rate of 10.7. This one is funded by user fees and ad valorem taxes to fund operations. The current cost, user fees would increase from 400 a year to 480 is our proposed amount to cover those fees. There are three areas that this budget has increased. They include personnel, equipment, and repairs and maintenance, equipment repairs and maintenance, and the sewage treatment costs. The sewage treatment costs are the largest dollar increase. These fees are charged by the city to process at their treatment facility. They have increased from approximately eighteen dollars and sixty-four cents a month to 2150 for residential and 3450 for commercial hookups. At this time, the city does not have any anticipated cost increase for '24, but he, Fred Jones did say that they are anticipating to do a cost of service study, but it has not yet occurred. So our first request on this would be that the fees are increased to 480. They would still get the 10% discount if paid by September 30th. And then the debt service portion of Sewer District Three is funded by assessments that run through the duration, the debt life. The assessments were not changed when the bonds were refinanced in February of 2021. This will allow the bond issue to be retired approximately in 2036, 2037, somewhere in there, approximately six years early with the savings of $20,000 in interest payments.
Jenny, reviewing my materials, I believe you spoke and said the bonds were refinanced in February of '21, and my materials say February of '22.
It was '22. Yeah.
All right.
Yes.
So folks listening and so forth understand the refinance was in '22.
Yeah, we started that process in '21, in late '21, but the refinance was actually completed in February of '22.
Very good. Other questions for the Finance Director?
Jenny, the delinquency rate of 10.7? Seven. Is that increasing, decreasing according to the.
It stays right around the nine to 10%, or at least it has for the last four or five years.
All right, any other questions? Otherwise, a motion to approve the budget?
Could we actually have a separate, I apologize, can we actually have a separate motion on the rate increase?
Well, we need to also close public session, or comment session before we approve the budget.
Good point of order. A motion to go back into regular session?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Moved and seconded to go back in regular session. Hearing no comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? We are back in regular session then.
And, Mr. Chairman, since this is my district, I would move that we approve the budget as presented with it for 2024 with expenditures of 173,356 and a mill levy of 5.770 in the first mo, that's my first motion.
And I'll second his first motion.
Been moved and seconded to approve the Fannie County Sewer District Number Three, 2024 Budget as presented with total expenditures of 173,356, mill levy rate 5.770. Any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Next motion?
My next motion is I'm hesitant to move for increases, but it absolutely is needed. I do appreciate as one of the homeowners out there, the 10% discount for payments by September 30th. But this district has experienced increases not only in sewer district fees, but also water fees and so forth. So I, I would guess, and I'm not trying to take anybody off the hook, but I would guess that's a piece of why our delinquency rate is as high as it is, because within this district, they've not only experienced sewer fee increases, but also water fee increases. With that preface being made, Mr. Chairman, I would move that the rates for 2024 be $480 a year with the 10% discount if paid by September 30th.
And again, I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Been moved and seconded to approve the customer rate for Sewer District Number Three at $480 a year with a discount of 10% if those rate is paid on or before September 30th. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Madam Clerk, what do you think we should do? We have a report coming at nine o'clock.
We can make sure that everybody's online. There's a Zoom for that, so we can make sure that that's working and get everybody online and be ready to go.
We'll take up the Hunden report at nine o'clock.
Good morning. On the Teams meeting?
No.
Need the volume turned up.
Yeah, we're gonna turn the volume up. Give us just one second. All right, can you speak again, sir?
Can you guys hear me all right now?
Much better.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, great.
Is Robert or Micah gonna come up?
Well, I was asked to, but if you want to. It's up to you. Mr. Chairman, I was asked to make a couple introductory comments before Hunden gets into their report, and so I. And so with your permission, I will do so.
Please do.
First of all, not to repeat a lot of the stuff that was said when we were asking for approval for this study, but I do want to, for the audience who's online as well as those in the room, just refresh our memory that this has been a process for over a year and a half. And we didn't initially expect it to be that long, but life happens and personal things, business things, schedules, so forth have taken place. But we are to the point of Hunden presenting to us today their findings, and I'll get into that in a minute. And then after today, they will clean up the document that he's Matt's gonna go over and present to us the final document once this is all completed today and on the twenty-ninth of September. Later today at three o'clock, Matt will be doing this presentation for the C V B and Chamber Boards, who are funders of the study as well as the county, and then the city is the other funder of the study. And that presentation will be made at seven fifteen, I believe it is, on the evening of twenty-ninth, which is their town hall meeting night. So the presentation's gonna be in this format publicly, virtually, on three different occasions, two today and one on the twenty-ninth. The purpose of this study, just very, very briefly, was to assess the facilities within Fenton County for convention visitor bureau, for conferences, for conventions, for trade shows, those kinds of things. And we did spend time with Hunden for a day or so earlier this spring or early summer when they came out and did a walkthrough of the different facilities. But this was all prompted when I was chair of this board because we had several projects in the planning stages within Fenton County, but there didn't seem to be coordination. And from that conversation, it was decided we needed to assess what we have and not build something if we don't need to build something. Maybe we retrofit a facility or whatever. So that's what prompted this. That's what got us to where we are today. And with those comments, I'm going to introduce and turn it over to Matt. Avila, I believe is the way you pronounce your last name. Is it not, Matt? I've always just called you Matt, so.
Yeah, that's totally good.
And and Matt's Matt's been the project coordinator, or I'm not sure of the term, for this assessment of our facilities in Fenton County. And I'll let him introduce himself and and a little bit of why Hunden is qualified to do this for us. And then I don't know, Matt, if you have other people that are gonna be on this morning or if it's all you're running solo on this. So I'm gonna turn this over to Matt and let him do the presentation of the Hunden study.
Matt, before you get started, I would like the general public to know that in attendance today at our meeting is Dr. Ryan Ruda from the Garden City Community College, Micah Bunch, Chamber, Help Me Out.
Roxanne.
Roxanne from C V B. Last name. Thank you, Roxanne.
Land Sync, yeah.
And Lana DeVall from Economic Development, as well as Stuart Nelson from Economic Development. And I don't see any other of the participants in the room, but I want to welcome all of our guests. Matt, so that you kind of understood who was in the room prior to the time that you begin your presentation. You have the floor, Matt.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, everyone. And happy to be here on this Monday morning and excited to present you all our findings from our community facilities and needs assessment. So this process, as Lon mentioned, has been fairly lengthy, lengthy, and we were marketed looking at all of Yorl's facilities with our greater team. Today, it will just be me, David Bryce, who might jump on from Congratulations Design. So he's in the waiting area. I love him to be let in. His drawings are are more so an inspiration to push you all forward in the future of some of the key opportunity areas that we identified through our study process, which you'll see here in a second. I know this deck was circulated with the greater team here. So I condensed that down to an executive summary version that we can then ask questions about at the end of my presentation here. And if there's any specific slides where there's questions, I can I can go to those later in the appendix of the report, which is in the slide deck as well. But just to cover the table of contents, I'm gonna focus on the executive summary today, as I mentioned. But really, our full report covers covers a broad range of of subject areas, beginning with the stakeholder feedback, which we had a great, great engagement when we were in person and did a mentimeter survey, which you'll see in the presentation in the appendix here, but also you all have the report, so are able to see those results. We had about fifty people that that were engaged for that exercise with the goal of learning a little bit more about how the residents perceive Fenton County, the areas and opportunities, and that was a great exercise to really begin us on our study process. From there, we took a deep dive into the economics and demographics of Fenton County and then assessed the core subject areas that really drive tourism or visitation into Fenton County, beginning with the conference and meetings, facilities, market, looking at Yorl's hotels, sports tourism and athletic facilities, shopping and dining and entertainment, with a small focus on wineries, breweries, distilleries and food halls, and then wrapping up with festivals, events and attractions, recreation parks and nature, which today I'll provide a summary of those key key areas that we looked at. As Lon mentioned, we were engaged by the C V B and and Hunden as a firm. I should have started with a little bit of background for those who who are aware of who we are and what we do, but we're really a destination placemaking, consulting organization that focuses on advisory work primarily for municipalities on creating these places where people want to live, work and visit, typically focusing on more destination assets such as arenas, convention centers or mixed-use districts, but we've started to really do these whole community-wide assessment analyses, which is what we're here talking about today. So really, the goal of our assessment was to analyze destination metrics, including market, marketing and visitor metrics, looking closely at the current market and product offerings, and then reviewing existing research and destination plans. Throughout this process, we looked closely at Yorl's downtown master plan that is that is underway and really tried to align our our recommendations with those so there wasn't overlap or those two worked together closely. And then the 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 goal of our recommendations here are to maximize the revenue generation for the county. With our recommendations, I can chat a little bit more how those align, but the goal was our recommendations into how Fenton County can differentiate itself and be a great place in the future to to induce visitation, but also a great place to live. It's focusing on those revenue generating assets for the county. And then finally, identifying relevant local, national and global trends, which we work all across the nation and really align our work and find great correlations with other projects and places we've worked in the past. So getting into the executive summary, the the framework of our deliverable really takes this structure. So the objective of the project is to begin with the the where are you now section, which is a close assessment of the Fenton County assets, looking at visitation induced, which you'll see our place or analytics throughout, which I know you all have a subscription to within within some of your county and city organizations, but really placeers powerful tools to understand where people come from and how many and what are the trends with visitation. So you'll see that in our core analysis in terms of place here to look at Yorl's assets in terms of their visitor inducing capabilities. And then from there, we really looked at how you stack up. So looking at the adjacent communities in Yorl's region, how Yorl's assets compare to theirs and how you all can differentiate yourselves from those other communities. And that's where our recommendations really looked at those other communities in terms of what they have and didn't necessarily want to be duplicative, would provide something that they don't provide that can really induce people from those surrounding communities, but also further away from the surrounding states. And from those two analyses, we really highlight what are the key opportunities. And that is really the culmination of our study in in the three main action items that we see are are large opportunities in the future. And then from there, we can really assist in here in the short term on how we get there, which include the implementation strategies of the short and long-term strategic action items, which which we'll chat about here in a second. So to begin with the summary matrix on where you are now, here are the the main categories that we assessed that I mentioned. And I'll go through each and then we'll we'll get into kind of the summary slides of each of these sections. But in terms of the convention and conference space, your supply is currently minimal in terms of total square footage of function space. However, I want to emphasize under this category that there are three strong projects currently in the works that will introduce substantial function space in this category. And I'll chat a little bit about what that's gonna look like, how that's gonna change the landscape and from our analysis of demand, if that is the proper quantity for Yorl's community, which we believe if all three of those projects come online at the total square footage that's being recommended, they will really provide a great framework for for the convention and conference market in Fenton County. In terms of the hotel supply, Yorl's supply is moderate with the Hampton Inn, Town Play Suites, Comfort Inn and Clarion as the top assets. The Heritage Inn suite recently closed, which is which is unfortunate to see, but it's understood that there's a few new hotel developments or potential developments in the in the short term that are looking to to develop in Fenton County, which we highly recommend based on Yorl's S T R performance in in Fenton County. In terms of sports, you all are good to strong with the current Sports of the World project underway. And then there's many strong facilities with Garden City Community College, Peebles and Buster Park, and then some strong golf courses with Buffalo Dunes and others. And focusing on the two proposed projects, Sports of the World, is really gonna be a game changer for Yorl's community and will provide a significant boost to the retail restaurant as well as the hospitality offerings, which will support for future hotel needs in Yorl's community, which is why we feel strongly about replacing that Heritage Inn and Suites with these two providing more consistent demand in the future. In terms of shopping, dining and entertainment, this is one of Yorl's strong suits in terms of inducing people from far away with some key key nodes of retail offerings with Walmart, Home Depot, Dylan's Eastgate Plaza, Schulman Crossing and Target. These really induce people from far away. I loved hearing the the metric that people utilize when we first gained the Garden City, which is you judge time and hours and people are coming from far away to spend their dollars in Yorl's community, which is great to see for these retail offerings. And then downtown Garden City is really a unique, authentic area, which we really feel can be leaned in on and leveraged in the future, especially with with future projects such as the the State Theater as a potential redevelopment opportunity in the long term, which I'll chat about here in a sec. And then in terms of rec parks and nature assets, these typically aren't necessarily as visitor inducing as as other categories mentioned here. They're typically more quality of life assets. However, you have several of these which are strong in terms of Stevens Park, Garden Rapids and Big Pool and Parrot Cove. And one thing I want to mention here is these two categories can can kind of blend together with festivals, events and attractions, which have some overlaps. So in terms of festivals, events and attractions, Yorl's supply is currently moderate with the Fenton County Fairgrounds, which will add a lot of people to the deal in this center. And then Lee Richardson Zoo, the County Fair and the Empire Days are really driving people to Yorl's area for festivals, events and attractions. So to look at the tourism overview, here's a quick look and you'll see in the in the slides to follow some more granular detail on on visitation to these assets. I know this is a little bit hard to see, but these are the assets we analyzed throughout our analysis as those core visitor inducing assets within Fenton County with the Golf Club at Southwind and Buffalo Dunes, not pictured due to them being a little bit outside and and really condensing the map a little bit in terms of visibility, but those two were also assessed in our analysis. So this is like really hard to see as well because you all are are probably looking at a small screen in the in the room. But this analysis here is quite unique and we love to geek out on on the visitation data here. And hopefully you all have a printout of this so you can you can see it in front of you. But what we looked at here is for the twenty twenty-two annual year, we ranked Yorl's assets, which there's forty-four of them listed here in terms of visitation, looking at both visits and visit tours, which I wanted to find those here briefly. A visitor, a visit tour is defined as an individual person that visits a P O I, not accounting for multiple visits. Or actually, let me let me flip that. A visit, a visit to an individual P O I is someone that goes there one time. And then if someone goes there multiple times, they would then be counted as one visit tour. So I just wanted to preface that so you'll see the number of visits is much higher than the number of visitors. And that average number of visits per customer is shown as repeat visitation. So I just wanted to define that here to make sure that is that is clear throughout. But in terms of Yorl's top assets sorted by number of visits, Walmart Garden City comes at number one, Home Depot two, Dylan's Eastgate Plaza three, Schulman Crossing four and Target Garden City five, with a few other retail nodes there to follow, as well as the Clarion at nine as the first hotel offering, and then Stevens Park at number ten. And and those retail clauses, this really shows the the inducing capabilities of those. However, there's a lot of repeat visitation largely from from the local residents, but those coming from far away for these offerings if they're not fat in their own communities. So what I want to emphasize as we go through these is the change when we sort these by total visits outside of the state of Kansas. So this is really interesting to see because as we sort these by those coming from out of state, you notice that the retail offerings still rank very high. So those that are driving through Garden City are captured because of these retail offerings. And one of the key things that we found throughout our analysis is how do we get those people to stay a little bit longer in Garden City? And that was a key question that we asked ourselves as we went through the analysis. Because they're stopping over to visit these retail offerings, however, what else can we offer them to keep them here in Garden City, in Fenton County, a little bit longer? We love to call those linger longer assets. And we'll mention how we feel our recommendations align with with making that a reality here in the future. And then finally, we ranked these by percentage of visits from outside of Fenton County. So not ranking by the absolute value of of total visits, but actual percentage visits outside of Fenton County. And obviously, those are all hotels for the top ten to fifteen or so. However, the first one that is a non-hotel asset is Parrot Cove and or Water Park, Lee Richardson Zoo, the Fenton County Historical Museum. And then we get into some of those retail assets, but those are some of the top assets ranked by percentage of visits outside of Fenton County, with those hotel assets obviously coming at the top with with a a large majority of them coming from outside of the county. So that really sets up our initial analysis. However, this provides a summary on these following slides in terms of each of the product categories that we looked at. I already covered kind of the high-level findings in that asset matrix. However, I want to focus on some of the challenges that you all have shown in that middle category on the convention and conference base side of things. Due to Yorl's rural nature, Fenton County poses as a challenge for creating a true conference and convention hub. I know it's been discussed in the past that a potential conference or convention center being an opportunity in Yorl's in Yorl's county. However, one of the challenges is one air left. We all we understand that's going. We all we understand that that's going to improve here in the future with with the renovation and expansion of of the airport. However, it's still a challenge in terms of really inducing large conferences and trade shifts into your all's community. However, there is opportunity to expand on the current assets, which we'll chat about, especially at Fannie County Fairgrounds, which we took a close look at. And convergence design provided some high-level drawings in terms of future aspirations for the fairgrounds. There's and then to move over more to the opportunity side, I kind of just did, but there's sizable opportunity in the conference and meeting space with the three proposed projects, and we want to emphasize that there is demand for all three in the market. Really, that we wouldn't recommend expanding on that above and beyond these three large offerings besides the enhancement of Fannie County Fairgrounds. We believe these three entering the market as well as the fairgrounds would really create a strong ecosystem for drive-in events from the surrounding communities and really create an event hub. However, a true conference and convention center would not be recommended. In terms of hospitality offerings, I mentioned some of those. However, we we want to emphasize on the opportunity side of things that an elevated select service adjacent to Sports of the World is a strong recommendation to support that term in demand that is that is knocking on your all's door and will be there here in the near term when that facility is built. So not only just one, but potentially two additional select service properties that are slightly more elevated than the current brand offerings in in Fannie County. And then in the long term, we feel strongly about a downtown small boutique hotel, which can really lean on lean in on the hospit- or the authenticity of Garden City and really create a a downtown atmosphere that's lively, supporting the retail and restaurant offerings that are there, but potentially more in the future. In terms of shopping, dining, and entertainment, I've mentioned top assets during the beginning nature majors that I went through. In terms of challenges, attracting restaurateurs to Fannie County is something that we heard during our stakeholder interview process as well as following Zoom interviews. And then in terms of entertainment, routing of entertainment acts is a challenge, given the rural nature of Fannie County. And Dodge City is really the place with their United Wires Wireless Arena to host any entertainment that is that is large and touring through. However, they've had they've had some challenges with their facility in terms of really maximizing its potential. So we feel our recommendation wouldn't want to duplicate that effort. However, we believe there's some opportunity for for something smaller to really create create something local in your downtown with Stevens Park. And then in terms of opportunities, increasing the number of local developments rather than chain establishments, you'll see our our high-level inspiration for the Starbonne District with Sports of the World coming in to create some more interesting local restaurants that can support the activity from Sports of the World. However, also, the Community College really creating a thriving node there. We looked closely at the Blue Hawk District in Overland Park as inspiration, obviously very different market, but that's another Starbonne District that is pushing forward the walkability with with meetings, indoor use sports, and retail restaurant in one location. And we believe the Starbonne Districts can start to look at that as inspiration in building that now as a more activity hub. In terms of sports, we've mentioned the two new developments with Sports of the World and the new Broncluster Rodeo Arena, which will really create some activity around the fairgrounds, which we believe can even be further leveraged with an enhancement of the fairgrounds, which you'll see on our recommendations here in a sec. And then for the sports offering, we want to focus on supporting or the support hotel and retail restaurant supply within the district, as I mentioned, looking at Blue Hawk and others as a real inspiration to really leverage the strong visitation that the sports complex will will generate, but then utilizing the surrounding retail restaurant offerings to capture those dollars within within Fannie County for those coming to to the sports complex. And then looking at local local events and attractions, the main attraction in the area during your all's community, there's two strong water parks of Parrot Cove as well as the Big Pool, but then others in terms of in terms of the greater Fennepark area with the zoo are strong, strong attractions for the area. And then your all's sports facilities currently, as well as the fairgrounds, are some of the key attractions. We mentioned limited supply of event venues. When we speak about event venues, we really need purpose-built concert venues. Currently in Stevens Park, there's the the Plaza outdoor space. We believe with the downtown master plan, that can be enhanced to really be a venue that accommodate more events, however, isn't a isn't a primary, primary opportunity area in the short term. In terms of recreation parks and nature-oriented assets, typically these, as I mentioned, are more community assets, more local residents. However, you've seen with the visitation analysis that Fennepark and and the zoo really induce from far away. So these, when they become unique in nature and aren't found in surrounding areas, people can come from far away for these assets, however typically they are there as amenity for visitors or for locals who like to use those throughout throughout the weeks. And then moving on towards our summary and recommendations, and we can get to some questions here in a second, so I know there are probably several that have been talking for some time, but our three key recommendations for based on our analysis. Number one is the key activity node feasibility and economic impact of the Starbonne District in terms of creating supporting walkable amenities, and then also in downtown Garden City. We see these two nodes as very key opportunities to create a great place for visitors to come and creating places that are very accommodating to visitors. So this feasibility study of these two districts would focus on what can be done in the future to maximize the revenue generation in terms of sales tax, hotel tax, and just overall spending and impact in your all's community by creating two very vibrant districts that are walkable and attractive to people that are driving through or looking to come and stay in Garden City. And you'll see two two schematic plans from convergence design here in a sec that starts to reimagine what a future Starbonne District could look like, which isn't in the report in front of you, because David was finishing up those drawings. However, those will really start to look at some inspiration of what those could look like in the future. And then number two, this could easily be number one, while looking at a fairgrounds enhancement and expansion study. Currently, the fairgrounds is is limited in nature with a few of the facilities not having the technical or HVAC requirements that are needed to really create an atmosphere where people want to be or or hold an event at. So through our analysis, we found that this facility can really be enhanced and expanded and can be a core node and activity for for events in Garden City, especially with the Broncluster Arena coming in with the Community College directly adjacent. And those two sin- those two complexes could really synergize together while creating a strong hub in the region for fairground-oriented events, but also introducing potentially a ballroom or a more elevated space in the long term to really cater to more elevated events as well. And then finally, our third recommendation is for restaurant and entertainment attraction and impact study, and this would really focus on attracting tenants and concepts that will enhance the quality of life and induce visitors to Fannie County. We understand it's been a challenge in the past with restaurant tours coming to Fannie County due to the distance from their distribution centers. However, we feel that our study in terms of showing the visitation and leveraging those things can really attract more restaurants into Fannie County, especially with some large demand drivers such as Sports of the World coming here and coming in shorter.
All right, Matt, I think this would be a good opportunity to make sure that if anyone in the audience has some questions, that they come up and ask them of the presentation thus far.
Okay, yep, happy to, happy to stop whenever.
Chambers, CVB, Economic Development, do you have any questions of Matt at this point? Or Dr. Rudolph from the college? Morning, Dr. Rud, how are you?
Morning, good, how are you guys? I think the the question I had there, and it was kind of iterated there a little bit there, but not directly, is just on on the demand. I mean, with our facility that we are looking at, at the College for Fine Arts, you know, a little bit over two years ago, we stalled and paused that particular facility here due to this was this feasibility study. But I didn't really hear, other than that there is demand on size and and what is needed for conference space. And then also, just back to your recommendations on the previous slide, didn't really see recommendations that were centered around conference space there either, so I wonder if he could speak to that as well.
Yeah, so let me, I'll change my chair here briefly, but I wanted to go to our supply analysis, and I apologize for not mentioning specifically the Fine Arts Building, but but here here we looked at the total supply in in your all's area for meeting space. Currently, that sum together is eighty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-four square feet of function space within Fannie County, with about thirty-four thousand eight hundred square feet proposed across Sports of the World, with ten thousand square feet of space. The Fine Arts Center, approximately ninety-eight hundred square feet of space, however, you you all might have changed that slightly. And then for North Main, being more on the on the unique events space side of things, at approximately fifteen thousand square feet of space, depending on how that facility looks in the future. In terms of demand, we feel strongly that these three projects would accommodate and generate demand to make these viable event venues in the future. We do not believe, based on our analysis, that there would be substantial demand to have a purpose-built conference or convention center with these three proposed projects in the works. We feel strongly that the community and Fannie County should should support these three projects because they have the strong ability to induce visitors, but also there's a need for dedicated events space in Fannie County that would likely, if these three weren't happening, would be in the range of about thirty, thirty to fifty thousand square feet of space, likely expanding or enhancing the fairgrounds as we as we mentioned. So that's, I hope that answered your question. I hope this table kind of helps. These three projects would significantly bolster the meetings and events supply in your all's market, and we feel like they can they can accommodate and will will also be generators of demand. We wouldn't recommend something substantially larger above this. However, we feel this is a strong addition, taking you all to the next level, and really will get the total supply over a hundred thousand square feet of space across the whole community.
Any other questions for Matt? Dr. Rud, did you get your question answered?
I think initially, I I think the only the only follow-up I would have there is just as we're going forward, and I know you've you've just received this information here in the last few weeks, you know, to really start digesting, but, you know, I think as we go forward, what I would hope is that we would have some ongoing conversations so that we're not having duplicative efforts on on conference and and other projects as we go forward. And I think those efforts need to include all entities here in Garden City, because it's going to be collective efforts if we are to do any of the proposed projects. So, you know, I would I would encourage us to keep some conversations open, and I know that there's some some other conversations that need to come from from Hunton or others just on what the funding likelihood would be on any of these projects. But just to iterate there, I mean, our project that is talked about here within this particular study here for Fine Arts has been paused for for close to two years now, waiting to kind of get some direction on what the efforts collectively are going to be here within the community.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Pishney, remarks?
Just a couple of comments, and I appreciate, and and I'm sure there's some frustration on the part of the Community College, too, with the pause. And as I said in my opening comments, Mr. Chairman, we did not intend this to be stretched out as long as it is, but as I stated earlier, life happens. But here we are, and I think the most important takeaway, and correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but the most important takeaway is with the facilities that we have, there are things that can be done to enhance our position for tourism, for conference, for visitors, for all the things that we're assessing the facilities for, without the need for building a standalone conference or convention center. And and to me, that's a strong takeaway, and and it does say that there is a need in this study, there is a need for the space that would be produced at the college. There is a need for the rodeo arena and a a yeah, an enhancement or repurposing of some of the fairground facilities and so forth. So I think those are important takeaways. Matt, I'd like to have you pull up Slide six again out of your presentation and help us understand better what, how you come to those ratings of minimal, modernnesses. I I I think it needs to be further explained, but a fellow commissioner was also asking me during your presentation, and and I'm just going to take the first column, for example. You've got convention conference space as minimal, then down lower, you've got hotel and visitors spending limited week. So the the explain what your definitions of minimal, moderate, good, and so forth are, and help us understand those rankings just a little bit better.
Yep, yep, happy to. So so really, this comes down to, we look at this on a scale of starting with seemingly none is the lowest threshold, then moving to minimal, moderate, good, and strong are really the categories that we look at. And through through our expertise, our, the firm was started seventeen years ago, and we we have roughly a thousand, a thousand studies and processes under under our belt as a firm, and and we've worked in destinations all over the country. And there's certain characteristics that define municipalities that would rank good in the con- convention and conference space, which would be those that have a strong convention and event center that includes exhibit space, ballroom space, meeting rooms, and then normally one large, a large up upper upscale, upscale hotel that is really a meetings hotel. So we understand with communities of all different sizes, those things necessarily might not be achievable in the short term, so we take that into account. However, these rankings basically are a way for us to show, based on our analysis of the assets, at a high level, where your all's supply ranks in terms of inducing people from far away, in terms of supply and quality of space. So those categories just help us and help you all in terms of as we go through this, where you all rank in terms of, is this, and this kind of moves forward into our opportunities, because obviously, convention and conference through this, we believe there's an opportunity there to, for the county to really push forward these proposed projects. We really strongly support that. So I want to I want to emphasize that based on the last question, that the Fine Arts, Sports of the World, and North Main, if those projects stall, we believe there's enough demand for a facility to come in. However, those. in, however, those projects, we feel the county really needs to support those, so, anyway, to, to answer your question, these just help us kind of summarize our analysis of the overall supply within each of these categories, um, and, and it also helps comparatively understand where are you, where are you performing well currently, and where are you not performing as well, so really, it's a, it's a holistic approach where we get together as a team and talk about each asset, and have internal meetings to, to really give them a categorical ranking.
Thank you for, oh, go, go ahead, I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to explain the night generation in visitor spending, so these two are based on, um, the ability of your all's current supply to induce room nights to, to the community. So, convention and conference space currently is more accommodating local and regional events, and not necessarily inducing people where you're generating substantial room nights, so, that resulted in us giving it a limited or weak, um, categorical ranking, however, others, for example, we know, for shopping and dining, um, the hotel room night generation is actually quite good, after speaking with some of the hotels, people will come in and stay at, stay at eatettes and hit a lot of large retail stores, so, anyway, these categorical rankings just really help us summarize things, as well as are relative to other categories, so that, that at a high level is, is what shows.
Well, thank, thank you for that explanation, and then Matt, uh, pulling us back to where you were in the presentation, uh, what, do you have some recommendations, uh, for the opportunities that you've been explaining to us?
Yes, so, so, and I was just getting to that slide before, before the questions, um, and then we'll get to David Strong, so I, I can't see anyone's face, because it's on my shared screen, but I know, I know David joined us, um, so.
Right, he did, yeah.
Appreciate that, so, in terms of the opportunities, um, this is a summary here that shows the short and medium, um, to long-term opportunities, um, so, for conference and meetings, we've mentioned supporting the Fine Arts Center, um, and downtown reuse of event space, as well as, um, Sports of the World, and then looking at the Vinnie County Fairgrounds renovation and expansion study. In terms of hotels, I've mentioned the opportunity is good with select service hotels to support Sports of the World, and then a potential future boutique hotel in downtown, um, Garden City. In terms of sports, this is in process currently, um, however, we believe conducting a master plan around Sports of the World to really create thriving district, as I mentioned, um, i- is, is important, um, and then supporting the development of the Garden City, um, Community College rodeo arena, the Bronco Buster Arena, and then Sports of the World as well, those two projects can really start to create strong sports demand, um, and then enhancement of the outdoor fields in the long-term, to really brand yourself as a sports destination, both on the indoor side of things and Sports of the World, but then having strong outdoor fields as well. And then shopping, dining, and entertainment, I kind of mentioned in terms of creating a star bond district that's walkable and has strong retail restaurant offerings, um, and then, in the long-term, executing on that plan. And then, rec- parks in nature, the opportunity is, is limited to moderate, um, in the long-term, the enhancement of Stevens and Fennett Park, um, to really create, um, more of, um, anchor, more anchoring re- uh, recreation and, and park assets, however, as I mentioned, those are typically not as visitor inducing, they accommodate visitors that are, that are coming to the area, however, typically aren't large inducers. And then major attractions and events, the opportunity is good with the Vinnie County Fairgrounds expansion, um, and enhancement study, and then in the long-term, uh, for medium to long-term, the redevelopment of State Theater can really create an, an anchoring downtown event venue, what that looks like would likely need further assessment, um, based on the needs of that facility. And then I want to turn it over to David, which you all don't have, in terms of some of his high-level district, um, planning drawings.
And before you start, David, uh, would you please explain for everyone present here, uh, what your relationship is, your company's relationship with, uh, Hunnand, and, and your role in this whole process, because I know you came out and saw in-person, uh, the facilities that we've been discussing.
Yes, good morning, everyone, I'm David Grisel, Principal with Convergence Design, we are an architecture and planning firm that frequently collaborates with Hunnand on projects of this type, and, uh, so our role in this is, is really supportive in the sense of, um, sometimes we provide graphic or tabular support to, uh, to what Hunnand is doing, and that we're usually in a following role, uh, kind of following what their recommendations are, and, and maybe making a few suggestions of our own, so, um, we're, we're really here to provide, uh, in this case, the, the idea, I guess you would say, uh, something a little bit visual for, if you get tired of looking at tables and charts all day. Um, so, this first illustration, and I apologize if this is a little hard to read, but it's showing an area that's almost a, a mile long from north to south, um, so it gets to be pretty extensive, um, you know, it probably helps at this point to see the whole thing, just to give you a sense of, this, this is the, this is our bond district, um, and I think that the challenge with this district is that, um, what you have here is, is a lot of assets that have, uh, they have proximity, but they don't have connectivity, and so, um, we sort of view the challenge with this district is, is how do we make it a more, a more connected district that might be something where, where people would choose to walk from one place to another, rather than getting in their car and driving from one place to another, and the distances are, are not in fact that intimidating, in, in fact, from the, uh, from the Hampton Inn, you're only about two-thirds of a mile from Sports of the World, which is, you know, maybe slightly more than walkable distance, but it's, it's not outside the realm of possibility, um, so, what we're suggesting is a, a couple of fairly modest interventions, and then maybe a couple more dramatic ones, but, um, on the modest side, what we would, would like to suggest is that, um, that we focus on LaRue Road as the primary north-south connection, uh, in this district, and the reason is because LaRue Road can get you all the way from, uh, Walmart to, uh, Sports of the World, um, but it, it, you know, right now is, is pretty much strictly a vehicular path, there's, there's no real sense of, uh, pedestrian activity along there, so we think with, you know, with relatively modest, um, addition of, of landscaping and improved walkways, and maybe a few benches and streetlights, um, you could, you could actually make this a, a pretty decent walkable route, um, that would allow people, you know, not necessarily that everybody's going to walk from Sports of the World to Walmart, because that is about three-quarters of a mile, but, um, that, uh, there would be the potential for people to walk from one thing to another, uh, and, and not have to get in their car every time they're going to a restaurant, or every time they, you know, need to pick up a roll of an athletic tape, um, so, uh, the big idea here is to, um, increase the, the walkability and pedestrian orientation of LaRue Road, and in doing so, hopefully, induce a, a whole bunch of infill, uh, restaurants to come along on the, the west side of LaRue Road, um, so that you would have a little bit more of a two-sided street instead of a one-sided street, which, you know, right now is basically all just, but on the east side facing highway, um, so that's, that's kind of the first, first big idea, related to that is the addition of a pedestrian path on the, uh, on the, uh, west side of Highway four hundred that would connect, uh, the Hampton Inn and those hotel assets that are on the west side of the highway into, uh, the intersection of LaRue and Schulman, um, to, uh, to basically create a pedestrian way to get from those hotels to the shopping district, um, which again, right now is very difficult because of highway interchange, uh, so we're, we're trying to create, you know, without doing anything really crazy, we're trying to create ways, um, to enhance the walkability, uh, the density and the desirability of this destination, and that, that's kind of the short, the short-term play, uh, and then, in the slightly longer range, um, we looked at the, the northeast corner of the Community College as a future site for some sort of event center, um, which, you know, might be the, the hypothetical convention conference facility that, that Matt was talking about, although that's, you know, probably somewhat distant in terms of, uh, demand being there for it, uh, or it might be some kind of a more generalized, uh, event facility for spectator events, it's hard to say at this point, but, the point is that that northeast corner of the Community College site could really play into this, um, development in, in the district in a significant way, because it is a significant piece of real estate, uh, it's relatively undeveloped at this point, and, and could be a, I think, a key ingredient of, of what, you know, uh, what is there going forward, where, you know, you're literally at this point right across the street from Carricko and Sports of the World, uh, and, and so I've also shown a bunch of, uh, speculative hotels happening in that area as well, um, that would, would key into, uh, what Matt was talking about, the need for additional hotel space as Sports of the World comes online, and then, um, to the east of the, uh, shopping strip, I've shown the development of a bunch of outdoor sports fields, which I think would be a topic for another study, but, um, uh, it's a great site, uh, it, it lends itself to that kind of development, and, um, thematically, I think, works extremely well, uh, with what's happening now at Sports of the World, as well as the retail and restaurant development immediately adjacent, uh, would, would play in well to that, so, I think all these things can, can begin to, to synergize in a nice way, but I think the first step, and then really a crucial step, is focusing on LaRue Road as, as a potentially walkable route from south to north through the site that would, uh, make this, I think, a much more attractive destination.
All right, thank you. I think, uh, we've reached a point where we need to take a break as a commission, I have, uh, uh, the need to dispose of some coffee, and I think that, uh, those of us in the room would like to take a break, so why don't we convene back at, uh, uh, let's just say ten o'clock straight up, and I know that's a little bit of interruption into your times, uh, gentlemen, but, uh, that's what the schedule dictates, so we'll be in recess until ten o'clock.
Okay, I've heard, I will tell you, we're, we're on the last slide here, which is just, so, we can, we can reconvene at the last one, uh, but.
It may, it may generate some questions, too, Matt.
I wanted some time after you concluded your presentation to have questions from the commission and the audience, so that's why we're doing this.
Okay, sounds great.
Thank you. Our guys are on the line waiting for us. Matt, David, thank you for allowing us to take a break here. We'd ask for you to, Matt, uh, finish up your presentation on the last page and then be ready to receive some questions. We lost Matt's sound. Hold on, Matt. Love technology when it works, but when it doesn't, Matt, it doesn't. So bear with us a minute if you would. Do what? Yeah. Unplug it.
Well, I think that's usually IT, but they tell you unplay it and play it back.
Hit the little icon where it says speaker. There we go. No good deed goes unpublished or unpunished. We shouldn't have taken a break. Wonder where the audio went.
Yeah. Here again. Can you hear us now? Are you hearing us now?
Doesn't look like it.
Doesn't look like it. Are you able to hear us now?
So these guys knew what they were doing and this side didn't.
What?
You didn't sign enough.
I'd signed three. Oh, were they, oh.
Two apiece.
Oh, well, there wasn't any flag on them.
You need a flag?
Yeah. We're used to it. We're, we get in a pattern.
Two of us got it right and three of us didn't.
There you go. We know which three didn't.
Don't understand. You had an example flowing your way.
We just saw the first, we just saw the first page.
Can we ask them questions while they're trying to get this up or they can't, they can't hear us?
Well, they can hear you.
I think they can hear us. We can't hear them. I got the thumbs up from Matt.
Quick question Matt, be thinking about while we're getting this sound deal straightened out. It appears to me that we didn't put it much emphasis on, uh, facilities that we had, like the golf courses. You know, that, that attracts a lot of people. I'm not a golfer, so just preface my comments. But my golfing friends tell me that people from all over the, the state, you know, talk about our golf courses. And so I was wondering if there's something we need to look at there.
Matt, my question is, is that when I looked at all the retail that you examined in this report, Menards was not mentioned. Schulman Crossing is, but Menards itself, uh, so did you bunch Schulman Crossing and Menards all together? Or was Menards left out? That was my question. So that's two. We have some other questions while we continue to work on the audio side of it. Commissioners?
Was the, uh, was Home Depot part of the, uh, Sams and Home Depot, is that a different group than?
That may be a good question for Matt in the analysis side of whether Home Depot and Walmart were on their own and Schulman Crossing got all lumped together.
I guess mine would be more the timeframe, you know, the, we have control over the exhibition building. It can maybe move that along, but is there any projections on timeframe with Sports of the World? How some of this all may come together i- in your view? How, what's our time looking in the future? Where do you think is going to get us to this point?
That's question four. Commissioner Jones? All right.
Well, and I, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, for Matt and, and, uh, David too, the, uh, what Hunnand and Convergence, uh, can do to help us going forward within the scope of what you're already doing and what might be outside of the scope, uh, of the fees that we've already paid and are paying, uh, uh, as far as assistance that we might need going forward to accomplish some of the recommendations that are being made.
Been a real good time for both of us to know sign language. And it just shows that I live in a diverse community and only speak one language. And we have 17 languages spoken at one of our middle schools. So you'll just have to excuse my lack of education and inability to learn something new. If my daughter was here, we could sign language away. Should that fail, uh, I don't know how long we stay here in this mode. Commissioners, that's up to you.
Not getting it to work over here. So if you don't mind, we'll try just playing it through here.
That's what we're trying. With the delay, we're gonna have to all be more patient. So Matt, uh, you have the floor and present.
Not translating to overnight. So our recommendation in terms of enhancing the golf course from the county's perspective, um, would be to focus on the areas that we've identified as opportunities. Um, although those golf courses are great assets, um, we don't believe based on our analysis, those would be areas that would really maximize the return for the county. So that's that question. In terms of Menards and bunching those POIs together, Menards was included in the Schulman Crossing POI. We can separate those and include Menards in that list, but given the, given the makeup of the, of the strip center as well as where those assets are located, that's how we geo-fenced it. So if you'd like that to be separated out for a final deliverable, we can. It's just how those assets are situated together that we found that was the best to, to bunch the Menards with those other retail assets because their, their connectivity.
When all else fails, you turn the TV off. And Dory, if you'd let yours go, I think we're back in order.
Are we back?
You are.
You're all right.
Great. Yeah. We, I was getting some feedback on Dory, so I'm glad, glad we're good to go. So then the last two things, Sports of the World timeline, um, I mean ideally that can, that comes as soon as, as we can get that, get that asset built. I think, uh, hotel product is going to be very important for that in terms of inducing and accommodating tournaments. We're always on the phone. Rob, Rob always tells us, hey, smiling, so we're calling tournament operators all the time to understand what these tournaments need to be held in a location. And commonly it's hotel product as well as things to do. So with Parrot Cove there, the zoo, um, Garden City Big Pool, um, tournaments will want to come to you guys, but it's accommodating them with strong hotel products. So you will have some hotels, however, replacing heritage will be important. So as long as those two can come together at the same time, that would be fantastic. And then in terms of what we can do to help going forward, this, this part of our study is really focusing on this broader assessment, looking at all of your alls assets. What our bread and butter is, is really detailed financial feasibility studies on certain developments. So whether it be the fairgrounds expansion or the build out of the Starbuck District, really that would be a further study to really dive into the details. And what that would include would be economic and financial projections that would over thirty, over a 30-year timeframe, which is how we typically model these. What the net new spending would be, what the job creation would be, what our estimated tax, um, impact would be in terms of new sales tax and hotel tax dollars that would come into your alls community, um, over a 30-year timeframe, which is really the county's ROI on participating in one of these projects. So that would really be the future, a future phase of work that we all would help you with. And it would also include detailed drawings from April, which I really want him to go through his fairgrounds drawings here in a sec. But that, I hope, answers those four or five questions. Uh, but if there's any follow-up, uh, please let me know.
All right. I think we're done with questions. You have, uh, some, uh, follow-up that you want to do, Matt, in the final part of your presentation, and we want to give you the chance to, to wrap this up.
Okay, great. Perfect. David, take the floor with, uh, the enhanced future look at a potential, uh, future fairgrounds.
Yeah. So part of our work was to give some, some visual, uh, thought to, uh, some of the recommendations that Hunnand came out with. And I should mention that we did not do a downtown overview. Given the fact that you have a downtown master plan underway, we didn't want to reinvent that. We also were just going to sort of set that aside and say the downtown master plan can, can be its own thing. But we did want to take a look at the fairgrounds, which Matt mentioned is, you know, either top or top-two opportunity for, um, for enhancement of tourism destination. And I think that the fairgrounds is a, is a great opportunity, um, particularly if, you know, again, with some relatively modest strategic investment, I think it can be dramatically enhanced. So, um, the, the big ideas that you're looking at here are, well, first of all, um, the addition of the new rodeo arena on the community college grounds, uh, directly across the street. To me sort of creates a, a, a secondary anchor for the fairgrounds that, um, sets up the idea of this L-shaped midway that runs, um, east and west and then north and south through the fairground site that would be essentially a pedestrian environment, um, you know, probably paved, but hopefully paved in some kind of, at least slightly efforted way with colored concrete or unit papers or some combination thereof to create a, uh, a fun environment for people and, um, really focus the parking where it wants to be, which is on the south side of the site. Where you already have a tremendous amount of parking and it's just a matter of, I think, developing that a little bit, maybe adding a few walkways that relieve the, uh, the vastness of the parking lot a little bit. So you have a few little pedestrian, landscape pedestrian paths that, that go through the parking lot. But the big idea would be that your, you know, your main gate entries would be on the south side, on either side of the exhibit, um, space, uh, leading you to this big L-shaped midway that could have, you know, for fair times, could have rides on it, uh, and exhibits and, you know, booths. But other times, uh, basically just provides a nice pedestrian access to the various buildings on the fairgrounds. And then, uh, you know, sort of building off of, okay, I have, yeah, sorry, what's? My, I was just hearing a little echo there. Um, and then, um, you know, looking, uh, well, then another asset that I think maybe is- And then, you know, looking, well, then another asset that I think maybe is underutilized is since the decommissioning of the racetrack, you've got a pretty decent amount of surplus land in the northwest corner of the fairground site. And so the suggestion here is that rather than trying to develop RV parking in the parking lot, we actually develop a separate RV park for RVs and camping in the northwest corner of the site that would be dedicated, you know, with dedicated hookups for these, you know, basically as many as you want, but, you know, with that limits. And a little campground in the middle with, you know, a requisite toilet shower building to service that. That can kind of become its own little thing and its own little year-round revenue generator as well. And then the big thing that you'll notice, which is really kind of off in the distance, is this future event center on the east edge of the fairground site that sort of serves as the opposite anchor to the new rodeo arena. That's not something we would see happening today or tomorrow, but maybe at some point in the future, a more spectated, or sorry, spectator-oriented venue that would have, in addition to a large amount of exhibit space, would have retractable seats, would have a portable stage, would have adequate loading and backup house facilities to bring in shows and could really serve any county as a, you know, significant spectator event venue, you know, way into the future. But this is not something that is probably gonna happen in the next couple of years, but something that might be down the road a little ways. But the key thing is to plan for it now. And this L-shaped midway sort of imagines that as a significant future venue that sort of anchors the east end of that midway. And I think creates a really nice, compact fairgrounds that would function well not only for the fair, but also for other events that would happen at that place. So that's kind of a brief overview of that. Yeah, and so any questions about that?
Commissioners? Nope, I don't believe we do.
Not specific questions to that, Mr. Chairman, but I don't know if it's at this point or a little bit later. But Roxanne and Micah have spearheaded this connection with Hunnun and the study and so forth. And I would like to ask if they, if either of them has comments specific to the fairgrounds, specific to the other things that Matt has brought up, if they would like to make any comments.
Roxanne, I apologize for not having your last name on the tip of my tongue.
It's okay, I've changed it. So I get called the wrong thing all the time. Not a big deal. Roxanne Lansing with the Fannie County Convention and Visitor Bureau.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My, I'm so excited that we did do this to get an overview of the facilities. None of this obviously is earth-shattering information for me because I utilize these facilities on a regular basis and sell this community. I am excited about previous plans or plans that are in the works currently. And just to look at the fairgrounds and think what's potential after we had such a great, successful fair this year and the addition of these. I think it's time. I've obviously, this is my forte. And so for me, this is, I think it's time to make those investments. We've done a very good job with industry to move forward as a community. I think the investment is now in quality of life and in those things that bring in the tourism business, so.
Thank you.
That's my two cents.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Pishney, any other remarks?
Nope, that's all I had. I just wanted to make sure we had that, they had that opportunity.
Matt, do you have a summation that you wish to make or in closing remarks?
Yeah, so the last slide here is really the how we get, so this is really our summary slide in terms of, you know, how do we get to number five, which would be execution? And really, that begins with vision alignment and beginning with the leadership and the community focusing on those three key action items and getting everyone's thoughts and feedback to really drive home what you all want to see in the future of Fannie County. And then from there, for two through four, it would be detailed feasibility analyses and financing strategies on how do we get these funded? And also David provided some great inspiration, but this would, the feasibility analyses would really dive into the numbers as well as the economic impacts, as I noted, types of spending that would be generated from these assets, economic impacts in terms of tax dollars that would be generated from these assets and enhancing them. And then finally, four and five is the development strategy and execution. So that's where we can assist you all in terms of getting a shovel in the ground or beginning to enhance these facilities. So that really wraps up everything. It's been a pleasure. Look forward to edits and comments as we move forward to a final deliverable. But appreciate everyone's time. And if there's any questions or you all want to reach out, feel free to call me or shoot me an email. Roxanne and Micah and the rest of her team has been working closely with us. And we're really excited about the future here. So thank you for all's time. And if there's anything else, what was yours?
Thank you. Matt, before we go, I just want to make a public comment that this report and analysis of what we're doing, getting the city, the college, the chamber, CVB, EcoDevo on the same page, pulling on the same rope, in the same direction, is critically important for our community. And we'll look forward to your final report in consultation with the other players and continue your hard work in bringing Garden City along and what our future needs are and assist all of the elected bodies, including this one, in making good decisions for our citizenry. We appreciate your help, and we're done for now. Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Pishney has to get the last word.
Well, I don't know it's gonna be the last word because you and I battle for that spot every once in a while. But I appreciated what Brian Ruda said the other day, and that is having all the stakeholders in the same, and I don't know that you said these exact words, Ryan, but having all the stakeholders in the same room, and that ties into Matt's number-one step on, about the vision alignment. And to me, that is critical. And quite honestly, that was the purpose in me starting this process over a year ago. So I appreciate Matt saying that. I appreciate Ryan saying that and you as well, Mr. Chairman, because that's, it is critical to have that vision aligned with all the different stakeholders.
With that, we'll be done with the Hunnun report today and move on back to our regular docket. Gentlemen, David, Matt, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Next on our agenda is hearing from Lana Devall from Economic Development for our monthly update. Lana, good morning. Please announce yourself.
Good morning, Lana Devall, Fannie County Economic Development President and CEO. And I'll give you just a couple of quick updates, things we've talked about pretty recently in fifth-week meetings, but things are moving along with those, so I'll get you caught up. Four-year degree programs, as you guys are all aware, Newman has announced their programs for the fall semester and plan to add programs again in the spring, which is very exciting. Their scholarships for their programs are based on the students attending either Garden City Community College, Dodge City Community College, or Stewart County before they come into the Newman program. So gives us that opportunity to ensure that our community colleges are getting to fill the need that they do very well and then taking the student on through a four-year and beyond degree program without the student having to leave our communities, which is a huge benefit for us. We have very good proof that we are in a higher education desert and that it is impacting our availability of workforce as well as our quality of life for the folks who choose to call our region home. So we're excited about that. Childcare, I had another meeting of the Early Childhood Task Force in Topeka on Thursday afternoon, last Thursday. And the opportunity arose to mention that we have been waiting on licensing on a facility since March. And the KDAHE folks who were in the room immediately sprung into action and started texting me, oh my gosh, we're sorry, we're finding out what's going on right now, which was awesome. And they came up to me at the break and after the meeting to let me know that they were on it and it would be handled. And I was clear in that I intentionally chose not to utilize my position on that task force to create special circumstances for our childcare. I truly wanted to be able to show what those challenges were and to fully understand myself as a member of that task force. So I certainly didn't do it as a, haha, we caught you, you're bad at this, but more so as a, how can we improve on this? I appreciate the fact that they're jumping into action and we're gonna get our facility licensed. However, not every community has somebody appointed, actually, no other community besides Garden City has anybody appointed to that task force. So what about the other communities? What about everyone else who's trying to get childcare licensed? So we'll take the license. We're not gonna complain. But again, I'm very hopeful that we're gonna get some significant, meaningful changes to our childcare licensing going forward, we hope. On the housing front, lots of good things going on. And we have several multifamily options underway right now. I know at one of the previous meetings, Commissioner Pishney mentioned that multifamily is not necessarily what county commissioners across the country are looking for. But certainly, there is a lot of evidence that multifamily, especially in an area where you're trying to reduce the footprint of the communities and trying to preserve agricultural lands that are surrounding our community and that drive our economy. Multifamily is one of the few ways that we can accomplish a lot of housing in a smaller footprint with smaller environmental impacts. And if we do them correctly, which we believe that our organization, as well as the city of Garden City and the Neighborhood Development Office, if you do them correctly, we believe we are, you create opportunities for additional physical activities, additional emotional and social opportunities that don't exist when we do quarter-acre and third-acre developments all across the countryside. So we think there's definitely some positives to having multifamily and to encouraging multifamily development. And I don't see us slowing that at any time. If you guys have pushback on that, certainly you should voice that. But that's a direction that we've been pretty clear. We need to go as a community in order to meet the housing demands that we have. And then I will just also give you a quick update on the W, the Hunnun report talked about with the downtown event center. We've been working with George and Debbie Wharton on that project. They have some great ideas for it. We were able to get that building on the historic register so that it can be utilized the historic state tax credits for the development, which is exciting. And we have, we've helped George and Debbie connect them to a couple of architects. They've had some challenges getting a local architect to take on the project. I think just because it's multiple buildings and there's a lot of moving parts and pieces and it's gonna take some time to unwrap what all is there and figure out how to put it all back together. So we've got some additional architects in front of them now. We did apply for the HEAL, which is a historic grant program that's out through the state of Kansas. We applied for the first round of that in the spring on behalf of that project, and it was not granted. However, they did highly suggest that we resubmit it in the fall after the historic group was out to certify the building. So we're hopeful that we'll get some funding for it in this round. Really, we just asked for the funding to help pay for elevators that'll have to be in the building and was really the only portion that George didn't feel comfortable knowing he could handle through some other sources. So we would welcome the county's involvement in that. I know Downtown Vision would welcome the county's involvement in partnering with Downtown Vision to help create events and to help fund some of the improvements that we need in the downtown core district. So certainly, if the county commission has a desire to get more involved in helping with that type of stuff, you would absolutely be welcomed to do so. With that, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Question about when some things are gonna open. They have a Kohl's store that looks like it's close. Is it close?
It's close. It is, yes. And they're hoping by the end of October. So they're currently hiring and it's a pretty big lift, about 80 employees that they need for the store. Great benefits to work there for full-time and part-time employees. So certainly, we hope that some of our college students will jump in and get an opportunity there. It would be a great walkable opportunity for those who live on campus. But yeah, as always, that's one of our, one of our challenges is getting it up.
Lana, we have a restaurant and a Starbucks, it looks like. Are they gonna open before the rest of, I'm sorry, before the rest of that development is built? It's kind of a polluted-looking situation.
Yeah, certainly, all of the access points have to be improved to the businesses that are coming first, which again is walk-ons, Sports Bistro and the Starbucks. So the city Neighborhood Development Office is, you know, when you have a planned unit like that that is kind of happening in phases, if you will, the city has very good processes for just identifying these are the things that have to be done before this business can open, and then you move to the next piece. But certainly requiring the entire development to be done before allowing businesses to operate wouldn't be very feasible and certainly would not be business-friendly. So the city's working with them to identify what exactly has to be done for each individual business. Yeah. Yeah, you're welcome.
Other commission questions?
Thank you.
Just note, and the public should note, that Commissioner Larry Jones spoke directly with the governor's chief executive of the task force in June and voiced large displeasure, I was there to witness it, the failure to complete a license, and that was 60 days ago. So whatever it takes to push this apple cart forward, and we could appreciate your efforts on getting childcare licensing done, and I will say publicly, from my personal perspective, not of this commission, what they've done with that license is bad government. And we need them to be more responsive to us. And that's the way I feel about it.
I'll be happy to carry those comments forward, sir. Thank you.
All right, the next thing on our agenda is the Fannie County Health Edition Platte. Good morning. Please announce, Mackenzie, yourself and what you need us to do.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So this morning, we have before you the Fannie County Health Edition Platte. So this is the location for the future Health Department EMS station. The Platte has gone through the processes already of going before the Planning Commission, before them on July 20th, was recommended for approval, and then was also approved by the City Commission on August 1st. So the last step really is just for the commission to allow the chairman to sign as the owner of the property, certifying that they own the property and that they've caused it to be surveyed and subdivided and to dedicate any additional easements and rightaways. So your alternatives this morning are that the board may approve and authorize the chair to sign the Platte, or the board may not approve to sign the Platte, and staff recommends alternative one.
Questions for Mackenzie? Otherwise, I'd like to have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we approve this Platte and authorize you to sign.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the Platte as submitted. Chairman to sign. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Next on our agenda is right back with you, Mackenzie, on Jenny Barker Road annexation.
Yeah. So for this item, the board Yeah. So for this item, the Board of County Commissioners is asked to request the city of Garden City to annex a portion of Jenny Barker Road into the incorporated limits of Garden City. So back in November of 2022, the city of Garden City annexed a portion of this, of this road into the city limits along with a rather large lot for a future development. So the east portion was annexed into the city limits, but the west portion wasn't. So that's what we're asking today is for the board to go ahead and request that the, the west portion get annexed for ease of emergency services and maintenance of the road. So the alternatives before you today are, one, the board may formally request the city of Garden City to annex the west portion of Jenny Barker Road adjacent to the previously annexed property, or the board may choose to not formally request the city to annex the west portion of Jenny Barker Road. And staff recommends alternative one.
Questions for Mackenzie?
Yeah, I do. This is going to be eventually part of the city. We all realize that. This is only, this is one of three major roads that connect 156 to the county line. A lot of agriculture runs down that road. Are we in the future, are my ag constituents, that direction going to be blocked from using that road access to 156?
I don't believe so, but that would be up to the city if they decide to, or decide not to allow truck traffic down there.
Pause because there's a lot of semis use that road.
Yeah. Now, like I said, half of the road is already annexed. So going north, that is already within city limits. Going south is the only side that's not.
Commissioner Dries' question needs a bit of clarity, though. What the city forbid was truck traffic. And that's where the farmers got, got into Dutch with the city coming through there because of Russell Child Development. They wanted no trucks. So that's your concern, right?
That is my concern.
Mr. Dries, are you done with your questions?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
We, we have the same concern. However, Mr. Chairman, the landowner who was, was affected back when they took that into the city, sold his property, and it's now going to be a housing development. So, but there's still a whole lot of farmers that are using that road or want to use it with trucks.
My, mine's, Mr. Chairman, is again, a clarification. From 156, Jenny Barker Road, this request for annexation is to the south or to the north of 156?
It's north of 156.
I just want to make sure that we were all talking about the same thing. So half of that's already been in, annexed into the city going north.
Yes.
And then this is the other half.
Yeah. Sam, could you go to the map? Yeah, there you go.
That was my, yeah, my understanding.
It extends up to what's the, what's the road on the north?
Rodkey. Um, that's technically not a road. There's a right of way that's plotted, and I think it's Fox Trot something, Fox Trot Road or something like that.
That's not Rodkey?
That's not Rodkey, no.
Rodkey's a mile north?
Yes. We're only about like three quarters of a mile north of the current city boundary.
So in essence, the city has already restricted truck traffic there anyway.
That I'm not aware of. I, I don't know if that portion is or not.
They stopped George Rapp, and he had a, had an issue with that. But he no longer owns the property there, so.
I would, you know, just observation, they own half the road already. So it appears to me that they've already restricted it.
Well, and they're going to have to deal with agricultural pursuits that are still going on on the east side of Jenny Barker Road. That was purchased by a development company. But it's still being used taxed for agricultural purposes as indicated by the irrigation circle.
I could, gentlemen, the irrigation equipment has been taken off of that parcel. It's already been going through the annexation process. And the front portion of that along Highway 156 is laid out to be commercial with commercial projects already slated for that. And then there is a 20 acre portion that's already been sold to Petra, and they are putting apartments on that portion of it, which leaves us only with about 14 acres remaining that's developable along Jenny Barker itself. But yes, it's absolutely slated for high density, commercial and residential.
I understand that that's going to be our 156 business corridor.
That, that is correct. That's an extension. When you look at an overall map, you can see that there's one parcel that's left undeveloped that we're working on right now, right beside Walmart, up in the corner of 156 and Jenny Barker. And then the next piece along that corridor is right there. So that is really the only easily accessible extension for, for national and regional retail.
Before you leave, Lana, my concern, you know, there's C dealer down the road that has tons of semis delivered to him. Is he going to be blocked from using that road to get to his business?
Yeah. So obviously that, that becomes a commercial truck, not an agricultural truck if they're delivering product that he is further selling. So I think those are all discussions that need to take place. And I, I would say that anybody who has a concern about that that's located along there that has a commercial pursuit, I mean, certainly we have trucks making deliveries to Dylan's and Walmart and, you know, all of, all of the city areas to, to businesses all the time. I think it's a, I think it needs to be discussed, obviously. But I think it will be treated differently, whether it's a commercial venture or an agricultural venture. There's, there's likely to be differences in how that's.
Three quarter of a mile, 15 mile road that you're going to block another 15 miles worth of activity. And that, that really concerns me.
Well, I certainly understand that. Again, to our point that, you know, anything we can do to continue development that's higher density, that doesn't push us out into our agricultural lands, is likely going to be the best for development. But certainly when we're looking at the east and northeast corridor of where the current footprint of the city of Garden City is, that is really where our opportunities for continued growth are. And, you know, as a reminder, right now, we have almost 4,000 open jobs in our community. You have indicated you want continued growth. We absolutely want to deliver continued growth, but that requires housing. That requires a place for folks to live and work and play. So we have to make some of those tough decisions as a community to ensure that we can sustain the economic growth that, that we've been developing for you.
All right. The matter before the board is to approve or disapprove of recommendation to the city for annexing of the west side of Jenny Barker Road, three quarters of a mile as indicated on the legend. I appreciate everyone's comments and concerns. Is there a motion?
I so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to approve staff's recommendation to sign the letter encouraging annexation of the west side of Jenny Barker Road as indicated in our legend. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, three to two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mackenzie? Before she goes, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
I'm going to bring our board up to speed just a little bit. We, we, some months or a year ago, a year and a half or so ago, approved a waiver for a mobile home to go on a piece of property on Friend Road west of 83 Highway, about 22 miles out in the country. Big windstorm last month took mobile home and away it, it went across the road into, into oblivion. Whitney Sable, who was, was the requister of the waiver, called me this last week, and they now have, still have mom, who is homeless, to deal with. And she called and wanted a, a kind of guidance on where to go. And I had her call, Mackenzie, can you just touch base with the commission, what they want to do now rather than a second mobile home?
Yeah, instead of a second manufactured home, they're wanting to build a accessory structure, a little bit larger than accessory structure north of the house. The way that she described it to me, it's going to be more of like just a large garage that they're, they're wanting to put on. So.
Mother-in-law apartment, so to speak, right?
Uh, she did not mention that.
Well, I, I mean, that's probably a close definition.
Probably. So, but I'm working with her to see what her, and I'll be working with NDS to see what her options are. So.
Anything else for Mackenzie?
No, that's, that's coming before us.
Oh, since we're asking questions, I had a question from K L P G. Does Finney County have restrictions of wind towers close to residents?
We do have very minimum restrictions within.
I mean, I should say wind generator or whatever, the electric generators.
Yeah, we do have very minimum requirements of distances that they have to be away from other structures and roadways and so on. We are working on looking at our wind generation, knowing that there may possibly be some wind generation farms coming into the county just to provide more guidance for those companies as well as a process for us to follow as well.
You would be so kind as to contact K L P G and.
Sure.
Talk to John Penninger and tell him, give him what we have on the books right now.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is upcoming meetings and events.
Ah, no, you got to.
Now we got some purchases.
Cut out, cut out our administrator.
Mr. Administrator, I apologize. I'm looking at the highlighted portion of my.
That's okay.
Now I get it shown to me in color. Don't ever make a mistake publicly. You're getting crucified.
No, this here is a, really a follow-up request from the meeting on February 6th. As you guys probably all remember, there was a request made from county staff to expedite some purchases for the industrial district pump to renovate that, that, that pump station, actually. What was presented was authorization to purchase those pumps, but what should have been presented was the additional machinery and equipment needed to completely renovate the, the entire pump system there, sewer pump system. And recall the, a couple of the issues at hand was we wanted to make certain that we have that equipment in for development up there in that area. And secondly, there was such a lead time on those pieces of equipment, not just the pumps, but everything ancillary to put it in ground. So that's what the request today is, is to clear that up because we, we ordered more than the pumps. We ordered the rails and the electronics and so on and so forth to go with it. And looking back on this, the minutes from this, the approval was just specifically for the pumps. So we're seeking for a motion to authorize the purchases of those pieces of equipment as well for this purpose.
Okay. Does this recommendation have a price tag to it?
Once again, these are paid through the ARPA funds. Right now, we're probably, I forget what the pumps cost, but I think they were somewhere around 50 additional pieces of equipment. Right now, we probably have somewhere around 60, 60,000 on that. But once again, they are, they are scheduled to be paid out of the ARPA funding.
Any other discussion from commissioners?
The original pump that we approved was somewhere in the 60 or 65,000 range, as I recall.
Correct, correct.
And in order to hook it up, you need about that amount again?
Correct, correct. It's just the additional pieces of equipment to, to get the thing going.
I think we're committed, Mr. Chairman, because the development across the road, Tim's development depends on that pump station as a part of the sewer system. So I, I think we have no real choice other than approve.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion after this one comment. We all, we have some things going on on the west side of the road currently that will connect into this as well. So with that being said, I would move that we approve the purchase of the necessary parts and materials, which was our original intent parenthetically, to replace the pump station at the Northwest Industrial District with the funds to be paid from ARPA monies.
Do you have an amount?
I do not have formally a total dollar amount on, on all the pieces of equipment.
Recommend not to exceed amount?
Well, we had prior authorization to fund all of those repairs for Northwest Industrial with ARPA funds.
Correct.
Do we need to have an amount in this motion?
Not necessarily, not necessarily.
Okay. Motion's been made to approve the purchase of all parts and materials necessary for the new lift station and be paid from ARPA funds. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Appreciate it, Commissioners.
Any additions or corrections to upcoming meetings or events that everyone's calendars? If not, then we'll move to the development update and ask Mackenzie to come back and give us a development update, please.
Good morning again. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. I just have a few updates for you. The, so the Randall Estates RHID amendment has been signed and recorded with the Register of Deeds. And then we are working on sending off that letter to the Secretary of Commerce for the Third Street RHID. And if there's any other questions you have for me.
I don't have any. Other commissioners?
Okay, thank you.
County Council, you have a report, please?
Thank you. I attended the city commission's pre-meeting last week. They had a special discussion. They had extended the invitation the Friday prior. They were going to have a special discussion about NDS and the ongoing negotiations that we've been having regarding updates to that in our local agreement. They had some, staff, I guess, was really looking for some direction from their commission on where it is that they wanted to go because I think we're sort of at that point where we need some more input from both commissions. I think my takeaway from the pre-meeting at least was that they were in favor of maybe making the suggested minor changes that we had put forth as far as this commission goes from, that we had sent over for them to start looking at, at least for the time being. It does sound like maybe they're in favor of some larger changes going forward. This, to, this would be for this upcoming year. And then starting in 25, maybe make some even larger changes to it and figure out how we're going to proceed going forward. I think a big question, at least from their end of things, is where, where and how much our input is with our, since we've made the new position for Mackenzie or whoever would be in that position, that we are inserting more input that maybe we have in the past. And so I think trying to define where those roles are and what it is that we can do at this point was a big question.
Good. I want you to keep in mind the timeline. This needs to be in place prior to 2024. If we're going to make big changes in 2025, we'll. If we're going to make big changes in twenty twenty-five, we'll take the baby steps, but please keep in mind, we can't wait till December to be high shins out.
Correct, and I think the, the smaller changes that we had sent over to them weren't anything that were going to change the agreement drastically at this point in time. And then, but working towards maybe some other changes for twenty twenty-five.
All right, other questions from Commissioners? We'll move on then, Administrator's report, sir.
All right, um, we do have, uh, working on an agreement with Kirk and, uh, Kirkham and Michaels, uh, for engineering services. You should have something before you, um, next meeting on the fifth for your consideration. Additionally, we've got a, working on an agreement with Garden City Community College. They are, uh, will be hosting, uh, CDL class, uh, that is through Seward County. They've requested to utilize the west parking lot up at the fairgrounds. So we have a, an agreement, uh, that you'll see before you on the fifth for, for utilization of that, um, portion of the, um, of the parking area. Uh, in exchange, we'll be allowed to send our crews that are eligible for CDL training through that process for a discounted, uh, amount.
Wonderful.
Um, Black Hill, you'll also see a Black Hills agreement, uh, on the fifth as well, uh, Black Hills Energy. Uh, this has to do with the extension of natural gas lines to, um, the sewer pump stations. This is related to the improvements for all three districts. Um, natural gas lines will, uh, fuel the, um, backup generators for those pump stations in each of the three districts. You have one in, um, um, one pump station in District One, uh, you'll have two in, uh, District Two, and then the remaining will be in District Three. Actually, I got those last two backwards, so you'll have two in District Three. Then, since last meeting, uh, you, uh, two of the Commissioners as well as Sheriff, um, Sheriff's Department and Administrative Office met with, uh, and interviewed architects for the LEC. The, um, consensus of, of that group was to, uh, move forward, if you will, move, uh, with an agreement with HMN Architects to do an assessment of the facility. You should, on the fifth, have a draft agreement of that, um, of, of that arrangement with them, and they are currently working on that. Today, what I would request in regards to that is, is from the full board, um, authorization to move forward with that draft agreement, so we can get this project moving forward. They'll be looking at structural and mechanical aspects of, of that facility over there. They anticipate the estimated amount of time to complete that was approximately ninety days. So we should, if we move forward in this fashion, have something by the first of November. The anticipated cost is approximately fifty thousand dollars plus or minus for that, for that service. And once again, Commissioner Grease and Commissioner Pishney was involved in that, if they want to pipe in on, on, on that. We had three very qualified, uh, architect firms.
I guess, uh, my thought was fifty was probably the max. I thought they indicated, I think they could do it for less than that, but, uh, that was the max.
And I would just simply add, I, we, we did have three qualified firms and, uh, we looked at not just the financial part of it and the timeline, but also compatibility of the people. Felt like this firm, uh, was most compatible with our Sheriff's Department and so forth, and be able to understand the language from each other and, and that type of thing, if you will. So, yeah, and the ninety, up to ninety-day timeframe is, uh, what they stated as well, so. I, I'm certainly in favor, Mr. Chairman, of our board supporting the agreement with this firm, uh, once the, our council has, uh, uh, looked over the, uh, draft agreement.
Is the draft agreement, uh, required before we have funding authority, or which way you want to do this?
Well, we could go ahead and fund this through the current year, uh, budget out of the, um, out of the, um, general fund, um, unclassified department.
Is there a motion to authorize the expenditure for architectural, uh, fees of the LEC not to exceed fifty thousand? Do we need that before, or is that a motion for next meeting?
Well, at, at this point in time, we'd just like to identify HMN as, and, and enter into, uh, an agreement or authorize the draft of that agreement. And then, when you see that agreement, plus that'll give them time to finalize their numbers, you can authorize a dollar amount at that point in time.
All right, so what you need is a motion now to just designate HMN as the authorized architect for investigation of the LEC remodel.
Correct.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Movement seconded to designate HMN as the designated architect for investigation and subject to, uh, getting our written contract done in due course. Is any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Would note for the record that we did an examination of the needs assessment of the LEC prior to engaging HMN by prior firm. I hope to see that those remarks and needs are incorporated into their report.
They should have a listing of, of those items as, I just identified during that assessment.
Very good.
Okay.
Oh, did you have anything else, sir?
I had one more thing, and it is related to the, um, interviews, if you will, of, of the architects. There was another architect that, um, whose qualifications, uh, were very, very close to HMN. And the discussion that the group had potentially was, um, to inquire of that firm, if you will, any interest in perhaps looking at designing the Health Department EMS facility. And they have substantial experience in, in public facilities. Uh, this is Goldberg Group out of Kansas City. So at this point in time, I wanted to mention that to see if that's a possibility, try and move that, that project forward.
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, move that we authorize our administrator to enter into a conversation with Goldberg with, regarding our EMS, uh, Health Department project.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to, uh, authorize the administrator to enter to, uh, negotiations with Goldberg with regard to our EMS and County Health Department building. Is there any further discussion?
Question, have you contacted any of the local firms that'd be interested in the EMS and the Health Department?
Have not yet.
Okay, I, I would highly suggest that we need to talk to them too.
Okay, absolutely.
Right, I, I don't think this motion is to exclude them.
No, wait, I don't want to exclude anybody, but I mean, if we're going to do, enter into conversations.
I, I think I have, um, a request maybe to, um, withdraw the motion in the second and include, uh, just to give the administrator the authority to talk with all architects in securing architectural services for EMS and the County Health. Would you consider that, Commissioner Pishney?
I mean, considering, um, yeah, I, that makes, that, that would be okay, yeah.
Agree.
Second agrees, then we have a new motion, um, Commissioner Pishney.
That's what I was considering. I would, uh, move that we instruct our administrator to enter into discussions, uh, with, uh, architects regarding the EMS Health Department building.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, as discussed in the pending motion, are there any questions about it and any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, very good. All right, I have, as you know, uh, one that's coming up, we have our final budget hearing and approval on September fifth. One of the things that, uh, we had not budgeted for or considered during our planning meetings was the hard work of Trista Joyce in putting our idle county funds to work and availability of interest income. Uh, I believe that report was sent to all the Commissioners and, uh, we'll take that up on the fifth. It does not need to be taken up today, but we need to make sure that us as Commissioners are considering whether to, uh, dedicate all our part of that interest income to, uh, capital improvement generally for the county, uh, with the upcoming expenses that we have. Uh, we could also consider taking that interest income, assigning it to the general fund, reducing ed valorem taxes, which is not my recommendation, but that's one of the auditor's remarks. And so all Commissioners, uh, will need to be prepared to vote on that issue when we do the budget hearing on the fifth. Anything else about that?
Yes, if, I might go ahead and add that the, just for everybody's information on that project at this point in time, County Attorney's Office has a, um, probably a, a rough estimate on what the, those improvements would be, which is just under, uh, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the improvements. Right now, there's a hundred thousand dollars that she has in the CIP, in her capital outlay fund to dedicate for that. And then additionally, a hundred, a hundred and seventy-nine, almost a hundred and eighty thousand in equipment reserve. Uh, I also received notification from her last week that she could transfer another hundred thousand from this year's budget, twenty-three budget into a CIP. Not to, uh, deplenish the equipment reserve fund, but if, um, if we, in essence, then would allocate, transfer a hundred and fifty thousand from the equipment reserve back into the CIP, that would mean by the end of the year that she would have approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project. I would anticipate, under full design of this, uh, that the cost would probably, quite possibly increase. And if you use something to the effect of five hundred thousand dollars as a budgeting number for that, that would leave a shortfall of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project. That, in essence, that's something we should discuss prior to the end of the year, making certain that we transfer that into the CIPs, so we, uh, cover that, um, that cost. Whether that dollar amount comes from whatever source, uh, through the general fund or whether it comes through ARPA funds. But we can decide that on the, on the fifth, I think that's a part of the discussion, but, uh.
Right, out of that interest income, what, if any, or all of it should be dedicated by general entry transfer to capital improvement? All right, uh, next on our agenda is Commissioner Reports. Changing it all up, right to left today.
Okay, uh, had a, um, Fannie County Committee on Aging, um, Eating, um, went very well. No outcome or progress that I could discern on the building of their new facility or what they want to do exactly. I think they're still in the investigation stage on that. Also had a, um, short call from, um, John Penninger from KLPG as I spoke to McKenzie about wind, wind tower, wind projects and approximately two homes and, um, other than just the normal day-to-day things, that's all I have to report.
Commissioner Pishney?
Not much to report, I did attend the planning commission meeting and had the item on our agenda that resulted from that. The, uh, just a, a reminder, I, and I am not going to be able to attend tonight, but, uh, at six-thirty tonight in Scott City at the fairgrounds, the Extension District will be holding its budget and R and R, uh, hearing. And, uh, they're, uh, planning to be, uh, revenue neutral this year.
Very good, Commissioner Grease?
Besides the architect meeting, uh, Fair Board, uh, is after the fair meeting and, uh, general discussion and general consensus is, uh, they were very happy with bulk of what, uh, how the fair progressed, they're very good attendance. So, well done for that, that board. Uh, also did the CVB board and, uh, preliminary, and then the report was presented to that. And for the public's, I believe there's another presentation of this, at, at what time, do you know, Lon?
Three o'clock this afternoon for the CVB and Chamber boards.
Correct, so, for the public's information, if they want to hear it again, that is available, that's it.
Commissioner Jones?
A very short report, Mr. Chairman, the local emergency planning committee had an interesting meeting and, and, uh, it was satisfying to sit there and listen to reports of recent activities, two that come to mind. One was a rather severe storm and the other was a fire at the R and R Palace. So, what was, um, was interesting, listened to the, to the manner in which our community came together to address both of those events and, uh, uh, I think we need to pat our responders on the back and, and, um, and how well they work with, with some of the private industry and the, the, um, volunteer groups. R and R Palace, that was cardboard bales that got on fire, those are probably like baled hay, a little harder to put out. And they ended up trucking those, uh, three hundred, three hundred and fifty bales to our fairgrounds, I understand, to tear them apart and put them out. But, uh, Paul had a nice report and, and McKenzie ran a nice meeting, so it was, it was enlightening to be there. The only other thing I have is I'm a long-term Rotarian and Rotary this July, uh, got a new chairperson and his name is Hunter Carson. Hunter asked me, uh, if I would bring up with, between our county administrator and the chairman of the board, if one or both of you would consider putting together a presentation that, for lack of a better term, would be the state of the county. In that the city does that for the chamber and he, he just would think it would be appropriate for the county to give a report on. So if you two want to think about that, and he said this could be a springtime event. So if you want to wait until there's a new chairman, Jerry, well.
I wouldn't let him off.
But anyway, put that on, uh, on the back burner and think about it and, and when you're ready for a presentation, let me know and we'll get you scheduled.
Already.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, my report includes that I, um, attended the Sales Tax Oversight Committee meeting and report that we're not moving very far. Sales tax, uh, receipts are strong and continue to be strong in our community, uh, with continued growth. We had one outlier month, uh, last year where a whole bunch of sales tax were received and the treasurer can better explain how that, all that money came all in one month. But as, uh, generally, our sales tax in our community and the economy continues to be very strong. I also attended the, uh, that meeting also for Sales Tax Oversight was attended by Commissioner Larry Jones and, as you can tell, there's a bit of frustration that we're not getting moved forward with that, uh, fire station and EMS center at the pace that I would like. But I think everyone should know that when it comes to construction and construction services right now, now's not the best time to say that we're going to do something fast, it's just not going to happen. now's not the best time to say that we're going to do something fast. It's just not going to happen. I will tell the county attorney's office kudos. Nick Verona was here for a long time before he had to go to court today to explain the efforts of the county attorney's office as well as emergency management and handling our recent event in the county where we had 21 and maybe more people completely displaced and the need for essential services. And that dramatically affects all of us in this community. And I'm sure that law enforcement, the county attorney's office, and those affected, including emergency management, will take care of those people as our principal charge constitutionally is to provide for the general welfare of the people in our community. That's my report. Is we have anything else other than we are set to have a budget hearing on September 5th, finalize the budget. And the next meeting would be the 18th. Is there anything else, commissioners? Administrator? Jenny? All right, very good. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do you second then?
I'll second.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, we're adjourned.